Six thirty-two, Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We're gonna call the ZB A board meeting in session.
I put together a little scenario of the neighborhood to show you what the rest of the lots are in the neighborhood. As far as them also being undersized. So I highlighted the two lots that Derek owns. Again, forty-one thousand, four eighteen here, and the twenty-six thousand, two-two-three. Anything highlighted in pink here is an undersized lot. In this area, it's still sixty thousand square feet, hundred fifty feet of frontage, forty thousand square feet of continual supplants. None of these lots in pink meet that criteria. The only lots that do meet the criteria are the new lots off to the end of Tracy Lane, which I think was late nineties, early two thousands. That those, this is the only vacant lot. These all have houses on them as well. So as far as being concentric with the neighborhood, it's not out of the norm. This actually is probably one of the bigger lots in this neighborhood at forty-one thousand. These newer lots here off of Gay Lot and Tracy and East Lawton are all around thirty thousand square feet. So this, this lot is bigger than most of the lots in the neighborhood. The one on the north, on East Lawton, is a little over half an acre. But again, if you look at the square footage of most of these lots, it's still, it's still bigger than, I would say, thirty to forty percent of these lots. So it's not, again, not really a detriment to the neighborhood to put a, to put a house on here. And I did take into consideration, there is water and sewer available. We've had conversations with Dan Menard. We went out and did a little survey. I'm gonna put this back up real quick. There is, there's sewer here. There's also sewer down the Gou, and there's a service line that runs down Cox Street. So basically, Dan said he wanted us to tie into the, to tie and use a forced main sewer to bring it down Lawton Street and into each of these lots. So they'd be pump systems, but he said this, the area could handle two additional lots being tied into the sewer system. Again, water is also available in this neighborhood. I believe, Derek, you told me it's at the end of East Lawton Street there's a water line?
Down the corner of Cox, Cox and East Lawton.
Down here?
Yeah, there's two different spots, actually.
Again, there's water and sewer available in the neighborhood. Again, it's an older part of town. A lot of these houses are not very big. I proposed a couple of ranch-style houses here with a two-story garage. These ranches, I think, were fifty by twenty-eight, and then like a twenty-four by twenty-four proposed garage, just to give you an idea of what could fit. The dash line represents the building envelope. So they would meet front yard setback, rear yard setback, side yard setback for current zoning. The only stipulation is it doesn't have the sixty thousand square feet. So it meets all the other criteria.
Question, the stubborn forced main there, is that from there to those lots that would be considered paved by the lot owners, not the town?
Yep, correct. Yep. And Dan said he would like it to run off the edge of the pavement. He doesn't want them tearing up the asphalt.
The asphalt.
And I know it's been done recently. This lot here to the north had me some brought in because I believe, this lot, I thought had come to the zoning vote of appeals recently. It's an undersized lot as well. And it's all family in this neighborhood, and they, they allowed a family member to bring the sewer line through this lot to get to this lot so they could sewer. Again, if you were doing septic systems out here, I don't think this would be a great neighborhood for it. But with water and sewer available, it kind of changes the.
Is there any buddies here with anything to, who can step to the podium if you?
Yeah, I'd like to see exactly what he's talking about, because I'd like to see it, yeah. You know, I lived down there. I had a lot of problems with the water system down there for like thirty years, and the town did nothing.
Yeah, we had drainage problems.
You have to come up here so that we have you on TV so we can hear you. You have to come up.
No, I'm not going up there.
I'm not going on TV.
Well, then you can't speak.
Then you just put your name in your laptop.
Then you can't speak.
Unfortunately.
You have to follow the rules.
We had a drainage problem down there, and the town did nothing for thirty-five years. And now you're gonna put some houses? Where are you putting these houses out?
The green boxes here are the proposed.
So they opening up Lambert Street to go through?
So Lambert Street is going through Cox Street?
They're gonna come through East Lawton where the pavement ends here and continue that on. Put two turnarounds for emergency vehicles.
All right, where are the sewer angles on that map?
I'm sure Chuck's got it in hand. The problem is out there. When you remove that from the podium and remove the conversation from the general public, we can't allow it.
Gotcha.
Your conversation has to go so that everybody in the public has all the same opinion.
Why do you have this room set up like this? It makes no sense.
Excuse me?
Why do you have this room set up like this? I mean, the people that live there need to see what he's talking about.
Please step, please step up, take a look.
No, I don't wanna stand up over there and see that. I wanna be able to see it right from where I'm sitting.
Well, I mean.
Do we have a problem with that?
I'm sure I can take it and turn it around so you hear, but I don't think.
Can we put that map over this way so we know what he's talking about?
I believe we can do that, but I don't, I don't believe in doing that.
No, the reason why, there was a time when I, when I was living down there for thirty-five years, and I had that water problem down there. I called the town every year, and they did nothing.
That's right. All I'm saying is I don't believe turning the map around.
Suddenly someone's gonna put up a house over there, and all of a sudden, we're supposed to be at, okay, let it go. I wanna know what he's talking about. I wanna be able to see.
Okay. My problem is I don't think you can still see it from there, can you? Does that explain it all?
I can see it from here. I just need you to show me more or less where Lambert Street comes in, where Cox comes in, and where he's gonna put these houses. And I'd like to know, most of all, where the drainage is gonna happen.
That's our biggest problem.
Because when I was gonna buy these lots thirty years ago, they gave me a hell of a time. Okay? Now, all of a sudden, it's like, like a walk-a-thon.
Well, I, I don't think that's the case.
It seems like it.
I got another issue. Okay, you're gonna put two more houses there. But I got thirty-two pounds in my house on a good day.
Another issue.
On a good day, I got thirty-two pounds. I'm with Steven De Niro, so I know pressures. I got thirty-two pounds. I, I don't have enough water pressure to take a shower.
Neither do we. I'm literally.
It's an issue. So, I mean, you wanna add more and more buildings. You gotta get another water line through here.
There is a big issue with water pressure.
Yeah, and the town did nothing.
None of that stuff has anything to do with. Honestly, I don't see two more lots going in from what I see at all. I'm here listening, like all of you.
Yeah, there's drainage problems.
That's, that's, that's because you don't live down there.
No, I'm, I'm saying I don't see these being lots. They, they either already are lots, or they're not. There's only one or the other. But we're just, I think we're putting a cattleload ahead of the horse right here. I see two lots on this paper. One's forty-one thousand square feet, one's twenty-six thousand square feet. Why are they not buildable? When were they created and who owns them?
The lots were created in nineteen twenty-two, but they were all fifty-foot lots, and then the town did combine them.
Okay, well, here's the thing. It is, if the lots were separately owned with streets dividing them, back when they were lots, they're lots. If they're not, they're not. There's nothing this board can do to, to make them undersized lots. We're not allowed to do that. We, we don't, we don't have the power to say that sixty thousand square foot is only where it should be, and it's not where it's not. So I think the rest of the crowd's getting a little ahead of themselves. I'm not sure if you applied for permits for these and were denied because we don't have a letter.
That's the, from.
We do now have a letter?
Yeah, we did not at the time of submission, and I don't know how you got the file without that, but.
I can give you a copy of the, you know.
They're held in contiguous ownership from nineteen forty-six. So in my opinion, there's probably a lot there.
Under a grandfather clause.
Correct.
That was my original question to Mr. Adams, that did Andy Bobola, the building commissioner, write a letter on his behalf?
That's what I'm, I'm looking at. If you're looking to do this stuff and subdivide and make more lots, it's a planning board thing?
No.
If you have a lot, you have a lot. This board doesn't have the authority to say that you can build on a twenty-seven thousand or a forty-one thousand. Like you said, it's sixty thousand, and that's that. There's, there's, we just can't go around and look at every undersized lot and say, we developed some kind of hardship and now they're buildable. That's not how it works. But they're probably, according to this, I'm reading this, and it says, these two lots are in contiguous ownership, meaning that basically it's one lot. It only needs five thousand square foot to be buildable. I don't, if, there's a street that goes up between it. It says it's a paper street, but it's here on paper. If that paper street is legitimately a street, you know, per se lawyers and everybody else, then you have two buildable lots. If it's not, you have one buildable lot. I'm kinda.
Andy also said they should put a plan together and go before the planning board.
Correct. That, that's what usually would happen when you're trying to do any kind of combination and subdivide anything or not subdivide it. It may be already subdivided because of this Lawton Street, but what it appears to be, as the Lawton Street isn't developed, it may not be accepted.
Correct.
If it's not an accepted street, then they're not lots at all. And I can't, it's not up to this board to accept a road.
I think if we had gotten this letter prior, it would've cleaned up some of the questions that my client has.
Yeah. We need two things to happen to say you can build on a lot, is we need to know that not only you have the, the frontage, not only the sixty thousand square feet, but the hundred fifty feet of frontage. Again, you don't need that if these lots pre-existed zoning, which when I'm reading here, nineteen forty-six definitely pre-existed the zoning. And if that's a street, you have two lots. If it's not a street, there's nothing. But it need, definitely something that should be, go to the planning board prior to here.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an existing private way that's in existence prior to the subdivision control law.
Is it a publicly accepted road?
It is not that, that section is not.
Then there's no frontage. So no matter what we say, you can't build.
They would have to improve the private way. We've done that a couple times in town where.
And that requires the planning board?
Yes, I agree one-hundred percent.
So we would need the planning board to say that they say that that's a road. And then I don't believe there would be any question here because they're pre-existing lots. They have more than five thousand square feet. They have more than fifty feet of frontage. As you say, they're, they're all bigger than all the rest of the lots in that area, and that's why they would be grandfathered. But we don't have the authority to say that you don't need frontage, you don't need square footage. That's, I, I think we're kinda at the wrong stage to be.
We're like one step forward.
Yeah. That, that's my opinion.
That's actually what it is.
I can't, I, I'm not comfortable saying, yes, I'm, I'm okay when you're building on forty-one thousand square feet. And then somebody's saying, well, they don't even have a street in front of them. You know what I mean? It's not, we can't provide a variance. Again, I could look at this lot and say, forty-one thousand square feet, and in my best opinion, it's bigger than every other lot in this neighborhood. So it suits the neighborhood, it's not detrimental, it's not whatever. And maybe there's a, a need for whatnot, and that's fine. But you gotta have the hundred fifty feet of frontage. You gotta show us that it's a potentially bigger lot, or not bigger, a potential lot, before you come in and ask for a variance on square footage.
So if we go to planning board and they are okay with improving the roadway, do we need to come back to this board?
If they go to planning board and say that that Lawton Street is a road because it's a road on this plan, and they say that you can improve that road and make it a road, in my opinion, you don't, you wouldn't have to be here because you would have a pre-existing lot with fifty foot of frontage and five thousand square foot of land. But if you're asking them to say that you can take a private road and turn it into a public road, I'm gonna say, now you've got a subdivision, and they're gonna want sixty thousand square feet? And I'm not comfortable saying you don't. You know, that, that's a subdivision. That's a different thing. When you, when you're putting in roads to create lots, that's a subdivision plan. And the town says right now currently, in that neighborhood, you need sixty thousand square feet.
All right, we'll head to the planning board. I think that's.
So for the sub main stuff right there, does he have to withdraw his petition?
And Dan, doing that, I, I wouldn't wanna deny you anything because I don't think you came here with a valid.
Need to have variance.
You know, thing for us to vote on or not. So we would definitely, if you wanted to accept, you know, your request to withdraw the, the application.
Yes, you okay with that? Withdrawing the application for now?
I was told to come here, that's what, by everybody. Every board told me to come to ZB A. I needed this, or else I wouldn't have came here.
Yeah, I, I get it. It might be a little bit of pass in the buck, but.
It's been a year and a half, a year and a half back and forth between different parts. A year and a half.
I don't think you have a lot here, is what it comes down to. So coming here might've been your best option, but I don't think it is one.
I have a question.
If, if there's not a road in front of there, if this doesn't say public way, I can't do anything. I can't grant a variance for a lot that's not even on a public way.
You can't say it.
It's land, it's landlocked land, it's whatever it is. But if, if the building department who studies this stuff says it's not a buildable lot to him because it's not an accepted road, and the planning board doesn't even wanna talk to you about making an acceptable road, then there's not much we can do.
Building lot, the building department told us, they were just gonna pass it through. Said, go to the ZB A, we're gonna pass it through. You got, you got our.
It, it, it fits the requirement for me, square footage-wise. Forty-one thousand square feet in that area is fine. I have no problem with it. But it doesn't look like it's on a street according to this. You know what I mean? So if you have.
It's on a private way, if there is a private way.
Yeah, if you have to develop the road, the planning board has to say you can develop the road. Because again, the planning board, along with the Board of Public Works and stuff, is the one who says, yes, there's water in the street, yes, there's this, yes, there's that. This board can't tell you you can extend a water line or bring in sewage from there. Dan can say, yeah, we got a stubble over here, and it's a good idea. But the planning board needs to say that's okay, that the system can handle it. Like, these people are saying, maybe it can't. I don't know. Like, we're not, we're not at that point where we can say, yes, there's water, there's sewer, everything's there and it's gonna be fine. That's definitely a, you know, a planning board, Board of, Board of Public Works things that they talk about and say, yeah, we can handle that. Yes, you can develop that project. Yes, the roads, you know, can be paved and you can do this. But without a paved road with a, you know, hundred and fifty for us, but fifty feet is all you need if it was an old grandfathered lot because it already ran. If, if this lot over here with, you know, say, five thousand square feet on it wasn't built upon, and this street is here, all you need is fifty feet and five thousand square foot and have owned it prior to zoning. This says that you owned it prior to zoning, but the road wasn't put in, so it's, it's not there.
Now, if this gentleman puts this house there, I was told back like thirty years ago that, 'cause I was thinking of acquiring this, and they told me, the town, this is the town, I have to put the road through the drainage, I have to put poles down, right? Manholes like on the, on the ground, grant it to the town.
And that's why it's a planning board.
We can go forward with your house lot. That's what I was told.
I don't disagree with you at all. That's why it's a planning, the planning board says what you have to do, what you have to bring it up to. Because if you got road on both sides and all you're doing is connecting it, and there's poles on both sides and you're getting them connected, and there's, you know, plumbing in the streets and everything you need, then you connect it. And the planning board says you can do that, I would say, well, now it's a road, and it's been there, and it's been there since nineteen forty-six, and they've owned it since then. It's way bigger than any lot in the area, so fine, go ahead and build. But you're absolutely right, it does have to be brought up to today's standards.
Right, I was just wondering if that still holds true today.
You can't just cut a dirt path through and call it town street.
Yeah, I get it. I was just wondering if that still holds true today. Because back then, when I came to this, when I came here, after a couple of meetings, they said the same thing. They said.
It's the frontage on the accepted street that you need. So for us, it would be fifty feet and five, five thousand square feet to be a grandfathered lot. If it's a new lot, because maybe they're creating new frontage, the planning board might tell them, yeah, you need hundred and fifty and, and everything else. If the planning board said you can develop it, you can put the road, you can do this, you can do that, do all this, put in a regular road, whether, I don't know, this looks like it's fifty feet on this plan, but forty feet. If they, if the planning board gave you the authority to construct a road and do all this, and now it was a, a completed development and under new, this board probably could look at it and say, well, you know, it doesn't meet a hundred and fifty feet, and it doesn't meet five thousand square feet, but it's two hundred and four with forty thousand square feet. And we might say that the sixty thousand square feet isn't a big deal to us. It's still the biggest lot in the neighborhood. But we don't have the authority to make it a street. As you said, it needs to be improved, and it's gotta start there. In my opinion.
I'm just curious. They could, if they chose to keep this as one lot, they could build the house.
Doing what I was told.
On that contiguous lot, correct? Because they have the frontage on Lambert, and they have the upland.
It looks like it.
Yeah, so.
Lambert Street is here, right?
Correct.
And it's in there, so you have a lot here, no?
So you could build one dwelling, I believe, right? The issue is that they want to split it.
Yeah. I don't know that they can split it or that they even have a right to the other side because I don't know who owns this paper street. If that paper street is owned by the two of Butters, then they can make that one lot. But if this private way is owned by somebody else?
They own, they own, they own to the center line of the private way right now, so they do own both sides.
There you go. So. That, that's something that I don't have before me. I don't know who owns that because, again, it says private way. And, and there is a street here and a street there. So generally, whoever developed it would've kept that ownership, just didn't put it through because maybe it was wet, maybe whatever. Or, as you say, they just abandoned that section of the road, put a center line down the middle of it, and they own it. So if that's the case, then it looks like they have way more than fifty feet and five thousand square foot, and there's a lot there. So the house can be built without any approval. To get two, I think you'd, you know, probably stretch it. I don't know. I, I don't think it, it's not gonna come from here. It's not gonna come from here even though technically at some point you probably almost had the fifty feet and the five thousand here and here. It looks like because the two properties were owned together, it automatically becomes one. And again, that's state law. We don't have, we don't have the authority to say that, you know, you can't combine them. As soon as the land changes and goes to the next higher level of the amount of square footage you need, it just, that's just how it works. It just becomes one. So it does look like to me that there's one grandfathered buildable lot. Because you have way more than fifty feet of frontage, way more than five thousand square foot on a accepted road. So I think that's where you're at. I wouldn't personally waste time at the planning board, but, 'cause it sounds like you're admitting that the, the street in between is owned by the, the people.
Correct.
So if that's the case, then it's definitely one lot. It's definitely a subdivision by putting the lot, the line back down there and splitting it. And I, I don't, I don't see the planning board saying that two thirty thousand square foot lots is gonna be okay even though it fits the neighborhood because that's not what the bylaw said.
All right, I think, do you wanna say anything else?
Yeah. So I don't have to go to planning board if I combine these two lots and just put one?
I don't think you have to do anything, they're combined, according to everything I'm hearing.
So everybody from the town has told me that there's two lots here. I pay two different tax bills. I've paid two different tax, actually, there was three different tax bills. The larger lot was one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-eight A. I've paid three different tax bills for, not combined.
I'm gonna just stop you for one second and just tell you that you probably shouldn't be. But the state law, from what I'm told, tells you that every time, if, if the same name, and only if they're hold, held in the same name, if one person owns this, 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 when, when the law became sixty thousand square foot, you had a certain time in order to separate them and put them in different names. If you didn't do that, they're automatically, even though you're paying on separate bills because you didn't choose to go to the planning board and say, I just want one bill for all this, blah, 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 they're automatically combined by state law, not by the assessors who were just following these little maps and things, not by anybody else, but by state law, you have one parcel. Five lots, six lots, twenty lots, but you own one parcel. Because he's telling me you own right to the center down the street on both sides. So you own the whole piece, so it's a parcel, separated by, you're telling me it sounds like four lots, five lots, maybe? You're paying?
Uh, it's two. They combined the one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-eight A, which is a larger lot. They combined it, didn't know why, there was three, two different tax bills on that one lot. And then the other lot was, whatever, one-thirty-six, I think it is. But if I combine the two lots, then I can, I don't need to even come in, planning board, and I don't.
I'm gonna stop you there and tell you, don't combine, don't trade anything, don't do anything. Just apply for a building permit for one. Because you can't, you can't change the lot lines or do anything and be grandfathered. A grandfathered lot is a pre-existing lot prior to zoning. I wanna say it's some date in nineteen seventy-eight. If you have fifty foot of frontage and five thousand square foot of lands, the state says you can build on. We can't take that right away from you. But you can't play games with the lines, you can't move them.
Yeah, he's not moving the lines. He, he's got two separate deeds the way they are.
That's what I'm saying. So, so apply for a permit where, on wherever you wanna build is, is my recommendation.
So I have two deeds for two different properties.
Do they both have fifty foot of frontage and five thousand square foot?
Yes.
I don't know why you're here.
I don't need them. I, I was told to come, and I had to come here. I believe, I wouldn't walk, I do not want to. I do not wanna do, I've been a year and a half, I've been going back and forth, go there, go there, go there, go.
I shouldn't say I don't know why you're here. I know, you're here because you're trying to get two lots. You don't have to be here for one.
No, I'm here, I'm here to make two non-conforming lots conforming. That's what I was told?
You can't, because they were combined by this, because you own them together, they become one. You didn't do it, so you're fine, it's still one law. You didn't touch it, you didn't alter it in your own, you didn't buy it or sell it or do it. According to you, I, I don't know this. If it changed hands and did things and changed this and.
As, as people passed, it came.
It, it should be grandfathered. Unless you altered the lines and changed other things, sold off another piece from it.
That, that hasn't happened, no.
But the, the two is an issue because they adjoined. If there was a, if there was the paper street down the middle of it and you didn't own the land on both sides, you'd have two lots. But because you own the center line of it, it becomes one. You can't get two, that I'm aware of.
I think we'd like to withdraw the petition. And we'll go to planning board. I think, honestly, the road needs to be improved and brought up to specifications, so the planning board's gonna have to see it.
So, you know, if they withdraw, are they prejudiced in the sense that they can't come back on the same issue?
No, no, if they withdraw, I think they're fine, they can come back next week with different information. But from what I'm hearing, it's, it's one, it's one parcel. And one parcel, they shouldn't need to be here for one permit. But to get two, you're subdividing because it automatically got put together. subdividing because it automatically got put together. It, it, it wasn't back pre-fought. When you guys owned this, and it was there, and it was two parcels, before all the zoning changes, somebody could've came in and got two permits, but as time goes on and on, you lose the grandfathering. You know, so, they got put together, you're still grandfathered, in my opinion, but for one lot.
The paper street isn't, they could draw anything really, it ain't accepted, it's, it's nothing really, right?
I mean, because they, this Lambert Street, again, from what I'm seeing, is developed. They have the accepted road, and they have the lot. It's, it's the fact that they're trying to draw a line down the middle of it that removes it from us.
All depends on all this...
I believe if you went to the building department and asked for a building permit, you have a grandfathered lot. But, there's no such thing as two grandfathered lots, because it doesn't work that way. It's 54, 5, 5,000 square foot, or whatever you have, but it's all of it. You, you can't, you can't draw a line down the middle of it.
All right.
That you have to go to the planning board for.
So I, this is the first time I've seen a letter from the building department, so I...
Myself as well, so apologies.
No.
Okay, so I guess we got that.
Accept your withdrawal?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Do we accept this withdrawal?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The other day, just, I'm like, this is so easy, I can't...
You're doing this...
I'm the chairman of the board.
Yeah.
My principal ass, so, and we have no help, we don't have any office. I'm just gonna take a leave, like, the office is gonna be closed, probably.
Well, this is all, it's all...
I don't know, they got me, I gotta go in tomorrow.
Do we have any old business?
Apologize, we're still in...
Apologize, we're still live session, but do we have any old business?
I don't have anything.
Motion to withdraw?
Second.
Do we have a motion to withdraw?
Oh, I thought you said... Josh, still chair. Did you say any future...
I have to check with the clerk's office when I file tomorrow, and I'll get in contact with you.
So we, we do need a date for next month?
I'm not sure yet, I have to see if there are any cases pending over the past month.
So we have one motion to adjourn?
Josh, chair for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me check that.